Call to orders, joint meeting of the Beverly City Council and Beverly School Committee. Dr. Hershey, could you please lead us in the pledge?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Doctor. Mr. Manzo.
Mr. Paul. So pleased to be here with my colleagues from the city council. It's not often we get together like this and it's a pleasure to look upon some very hardworking colleagues from across the city. Earlier this week, I was going through my son's schoolwork as I do every now and then and there was a copy of John F. Kennedy's inaugural address that he was looking at and one of the quotes in there struck me. Kennedy said, "United, there's little that we cannot do in a host of cooperative ventures." And I look upon my colleagues in the city council in that very same way. We have a lot of challenges ahead of us, including a new middle school project, but I know we have allies in this cooperative venture and that the city of Beverly will succeed. First order of business tonight is to talk about the middle school project. Currently, there's a group of some 20 or so people on the school building committee, which meet regularly. There's also a working group of people that meet on a weekly basis to go through the process. It's a very elaborate process to design and build a new middle school. And so we're very fortunate to have two guests with us tonight. They represent Hiri International, which is our owner's project manager that we're hired early on in the project. And so I want to ask Mark Lyden and Al Calgano to come up and give us a little bit of an overview of where the project is and where we're heading in the next several years.
Good evening. Thank you for inviting me here. It's my intent to provide a bit of an update and a status on the new Beverly Middle School project. On November 25th, just a few days ago, we submitted what's called the Preliminary Design Program. That's a very large document, which a lot of people have put a significant amount of effort into comprising these two very large volumes. Lot of information in there, but boiling it down, what it does is it identifies the inventory of existing school facilities and the condition of those facilities. And then it adds to that a educational vision as well as an educational program. Now, that gets submitted to the state and we looked at a number, a fairly large number of alternatives as to how we take the assets that you have and get with building construction projects to the vision that you also have, to be a 21st, you know, deliverer of 21st century quality education. So the designer had a specialist, and I think Dr. Hershey will cover a little bit of the visioning activity. So what that did is put a lot of people in the staff administration and faculty together to develop and identify what your priorities and your needs are moving into the future from an educational standpoint. The MSBA will look at these options and hopefully agree that the options that I'm going to speak to in a moment are the most appropriate. Now, the city of Beverly did an incredibly good job with their statement of interest, which was one of the early documents that was submitted to MSBA in an effort to get an invitation to participate in a feasibility study and receive some additional state funding. In that document, you identified that it was probably in your best interest to move forward with a grade configuration of a five through eight middle school and that you would like that middle school housed on the memorial site. Now, we did a very good job putting that together. Spare with me, I'm not typically up at a podium. So the MSBA, when we met in some of our early meetings, cautioned us that they did not want to simply jump prematurely to a conclusion, that we needed to look carefully and thoughtfully at a variety of options. Those options did include a six through eight grade configuration. So therefore, what we've done to date is take pretty much eight potential projects, which comprises a new school on the memorial site, an addition renovation on the memorial site for both a five through eight and a six through eight grade configuration. Did the same thing, studying those similar options for a grade configuration for projects on the existing Briscoe site. So that's all the information that's been provided to the MSBA. It's been the conclusion of the team that as a result of a very, very thoughtful and informed review, that a project, a building project that has a six, I'm sorry, a five through eight grade configuration on the memorial site is the most appropriate path forward to serve your educational needs. So currently, between now and the submission of what's called the Preferred Schematic Report in early part of February, we're developing three alternatives that will be more fully detailed, that'll show how and what a facility might look like with respect to a floor plan for a new facility on the memorial school site, for two options of an addition renovation, one that may retain a little more of the memorial school facility. So again, we've looked at eight options, whittled it down to three, and that information's been provided to the MSBA. There was a handout that includes a schedule, so that the MSBA has a very, very prescriptive approach. We follow what they call their various modules, feasibility studies, schematic design, final design, and construction. We're currently working on the feasibility study. We will submit the Preferred Schematic Report, the 12th of February, in anticipation of a favorable board vote on the 25th of March. That being said, we will move into what's called the schematic design phase, where we actually start to put in more detail on a specific project. And that effort will take place between August, I'm sorry, we'll make the submission on August 6th in anticipation of a September 30th MSBA board vote. Once we get that board vote, then we'll go into the final design phase, which will take place between August and September of 2016. The team and the committee have determined that it's probably using the CM@Risk delivery method, now allowed by the Construction Reform Act, is best suited to this project, so we can get the advantages of having a construction manager, the builder, on the team and working early. So there's a request that's being prepared now that will go to the inspector general's office shortly to receive approval to allow us to proceed with that delivery method. So again, the project will have some early release packages, probably see a little bit of construction taking place as early as April of 2016. The construction, we expect, will be substantially complete on the new facility on April 1st of 2018, allowing time to put in the fixtures, furnishings, and equipment, as well as the appropriate technology, allowing also time for the staff and faculty to get into the building with the maintenance folks to get it up and running, which will be ready for students in September of 2018. So again, a lot of work, there's a lot of detail. It's progressing on a fairly aggressive schedule. The designer, AI3, has been doing a fantastic job. So again, if there are any questions, I can answer at this time, I'd be happy to.
Thank you. I just want to add just a bit of context to, thank you, Mark, great presentation, just a bit of context. One, we expect, it's during the schematic design work between now and next September. As we get into next summer, that's about the time that we'll be nailing down the project scope and budget agreement with the state. That's what would be, what will be approved at that September board meeting is our goal. So I mentioned this for the city council, it'll be during next summertime that we'll be coming to the council to get final approval for the funding, you know, for the city's portion, because it's during that timeframe that it'll become clear what the, you know, what the approved price tag will be, as well as what the state percentage of reimbursement will be versus the city's percentage of responsibility. So you can expect next summer to be the timeframe that we're talking those numbers. The other thing I just want to add is that when Mark was looking ahead towards completion of the building itself, our goal is to get staff in at the end of the 2017-18 school year in June, so that the new school can be occupied by staff at the end of their school year to get them ready for September, also allowing for, as the fifth grade teachers move into the new school at the end of that school year, allowing for the elementary schools to have that whole summer to start to, you know, plan for what they'll be doing with additional space opportunities for that September 2018 opening. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are there other questions from the committee or the council for either Mark or Al? Yes, Matt.
You mentioned three design alternatives. What is the process for choosing the best of the threes? What are the factors that go into that decision?
Okay, the key, the fundamental factors is how well each of them meet the educational program and the visioning that's been established. So the whole foundation of the entire end product is which one best suits the outline of your educational requirements. And again, it's a very, very collaborative effort. Cost has some, you know, appropriate effect on where we head, but ensuring that the foundation that this is all built on, the achieving the educational goals is really the key. So the three alternatives will be new construction and renovation and addition on the memorial site. So again-
Ultimately, whose decision is that?
It's a collective decision and probably focused on the building committee with input. There's a lot of public participation along the way, opportunity for, you know, public to identify what their thoughts and desires are. But it's a pretty well-laid out program and you guys have an incredibly well-positioned building committee. You probably have more, you know, relevant experience on that committee as compared to others that I've seen. So there's already been quite a lot of dialogue on such things as, you know, BIM, which is Building Information Modeling, on alternative materials. So there's been, you know, it's an extremely well-done collaborative process here in Beverly.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lang.
Could you give a little more detail on the scoring system, how that decision is finally made? You mentioned cost is one of the criteria. Are there other criteria that you're going to use?
There's not, there's not a, like a hugely quantitative assessment. It's, you know, fairly subjective. But again, it's not, it's not the goal nor the approach of the owner's project manager nor the design team to force-fit or provide a project that the community or the, you know, the school department and the administration aren't fully behind. So I mean, it's primarily up to the consulting team to give the players and the participants in the various committees and governing authorities the information they need so that, you know, as a team, the best decision for the city of Beverly is reached. Again, it's not, you know, we don't deliver to you, here's the school we think is best. It's far more engaged and collaborative than that. And again, it's not a, you add up the numbers on three different scoring sheets, it's not quite as objective as that either.
Okay, thank you.
If I may, Hiri actually served us very well in construction of this building here as our owner's project manager. The role of the OPM is really to look out for the best interests of the community. The community still decides what the building looks like, how much it costs, how to pay for it, how to build it, where to build it. The OPM, Mark, Al, and their colleagues are there really to just sort of help us through that process and protect our interests so that it becomes a sound investment for the community to make. Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Freydis.
On the cost, I'm sure there's some ballpark on new construction, renovating the old, and I'm wondering if, you can't talk in dollars, maybe percentages, what the savings would be if you were going to do a renovation versus a new construction.
You know, I, Mr. Mayor, is I'm not sure. We had a weekly meeting with Hiri and AI3, the designer, this morning. You know, we have this conversation weekly. There are, the expectation is that of these three proposals, two renovation addition options with five to eight, and one new construction with five to eight on the memorial site, the expectation is that there won't be significant difference in cost among the three. You know, there are a number of challenges with renovating space that was built before the ADA, it was passed, the American Disabilities Act was passed, challenges with modernizing systems in a building that's 60-plus years old. So initially, you might think there are significant savings to be had in renovating. You know, point by point, you could see that those don't real, they're not really realized on most fronts. But that said, we will get a better sense. Now, AI3 is the designer, they're the ones putting together these three options. They'll be working incredibly hard through the holiday season, it's interesting for them. They've, they're excited about this project, but we're in a busy season now between now and early January for them to work on these three options. And we'll have a much better sense when they, when we, when they come to our next building committee meeting on January, I think it's the 13th.
Thirteen.
And, you know, those are public and they're likely, I'm not sure where, but maybe right here, but you know, certainly an opportunity to listen in. We'll have a better sense of those ballpark costs, which still won't be nailed down, you know, but we'll have a much better sense, I think, at that time and be able to compare the three options along the lines of comparative cost.
But you anticipate it being negligible?
Close enough that it shouldn't drive the decision.
Great.
If that makes sense.
Perfect.
Mr. Ladder.
Thanks, Sean. And I'm just trying to remember from how this went with the high school, and I know the project has changed somewhat, but ultimately, the city's building commission will make a recommendation to the school committee, and then the school committee will, in effect, ask the council to fund it? Is that how the actual chain of decision-making will go, or does the building commission come straight to the council?
It's, my understanding is the same as yours, that, but I'm very hopeful that both the school building committee and the school committee will agree on the best approach to take and together reach a conclusion towards what that building will look like. And then certainly, we will be coming to the city council to ask for funding for our share of this project.
I'm just trying to understand, because there will be some benchmark votes and public decisions that we're going to have to make, and I'm just trying to understand how that plays out.
I think we're, each step of the way, we're trying to interpret the state statutes that govern here. And for example, with the submission of the, I'm sorry, the preliminary design program last week, it required a vote of the school building committee and signatures of Dr. Hershey, school committee president Manzo, and me on behalf of the city. There will be other steps along the way that do require, I believe, a school committee vote, and obviously, the funding piece will require city council vote. So at each benchmark, we're working to understand MSBA's requirements. I think that's a, you know, great point raised. We should be able to take them going forward and lay those out there for everybody to see ahead of time. These are the ones that will require this body's official approval and that body's. So we'll make sure that with each of these checkpoints, it's clear ahead of time.
Well, moments ago, the mayor mentioned AI3, our design team, and unfortunately, they couldn't be here tonight because they're working so hard on the design.
They probably are, too.
And so, as are Mark and Al and their colleagues. And so I want to, again, thank both of you for coming and filling us in on the process to date, and I'm sure we'll be seeing a lot of you in Beverly for the next few years.
Glad to be here.
And so in lieu of AI3, Dr. Hershey's going to be speaking and filling in for AI3.
If I could, Mr. President, just for the city council members, AI3 has presented to the school committee, and they would like to come present to the council sometime early in the new year. So we'll have them reach out to council president and the clerk.
And so Dr. Hershey will summarize the work that AI3's been doing so far with his staff, with his administration, other members of the community. They have been present on a daily basis in our schools, trying to find out, trying to figure out what Beverly's all about so that they can deliver the best design for a middle school. And so, Dr. Hershey.
Thank you. I want to put a little bit of meat on the bones of what we've been doing. There's a tremendous amount of work that's been going on. As the mayor said, we have a group that meets weekly with AI3 and Hiri. There's been a lot of work from the standpoint of the school district around getting an understanding of what we're trying to do from a programmatic standpoint for the kids in Beverly. So if you don't know AI3, they look at this process a little differently than the other architects I've worked with before. And they really see it from the standpoint of they're building a building to enhance our program. They're not building a building that we have to fit our program into. So a lot of the work that we've done up to this point has been educational visioning, thinking into the future, thinking into four years from now, because while it doesn't seem that far away, even our technology conversation right now, there's going to be a different technology available four years from now. So figuring that kind of thing out and working from a visioning standpoint. So I've got some quick slides for you. These are AI3's slides, I'm using with permission. So just initially, what Al and Mark had was the initial phase that was actually delivered last week. I like to call it the thud factor, so if you drop those two volumes, what kind of noise does it make? It makes a thud. So just to give you some of the idea of what's in there, so there's a project background. As was said, there's a description of why the feasibility study, and there's a description around Beverly's commitment to renovating and improving their school buildings, because that's an important factor for MSBA. Talks about the existing conditions in each of the buildings. They also did some geotechnical, so if you saw people out there before the soccer games in the afternoon, taking borings at the memorial site to see what the conditions are underneath. As we all know, there's clay, but they have to be able to actually significantly show that in the report that they did. They've been doing a tremendous amount of traffic studies to make sure that as we build any building, that we know what the impact is going to be on traffic. But the real work of the school district over the last four months has been intensely doing visioning sessions. We've had between 20 and 40 staff members involved in this. We have a significant number of teachers at the middle school. We have teachers in, from the elementary school, because we have a fifth grade going into this building. And we also invited in some high school teachers, because they can not only contribute from the standpoint of what they have as a vision for instruction, but they also are living in this building and have been able to assist with some of the thoughts on how, once we got into the building, how does it work? And does it work as well as they hoped? So so far, we've had this number of sessions. We did an initial three-hour session with the district administrators. They use David Stephen, who does educational visioning. David's actually from Harvard, and he did a lot of work around the high-tech high schools in California. So he's done a lot of design of future-thinking buildings. We did a two-hour session with the district administrators and all the directors. We did subcommittee to the school building committee, we did the education subcommittee. We did a full-day session with district administrators, coordinators, building committee members, school committee members, faculty and staff. I want to thank Dr. Wiley, because he gave us space at the Wiley Center in order to do the visioning, so people could actually focus for the entire day on that. And we did a tremendous amount of work that day. In addition, we had another three-hour session with district administrators, middle school administrators, faculty and staff. So after the September 24th group, we actually pared it down to a group that was actually more workable, that has been doing the rest of these meetings. Some key points is on November 4th, AI3 actually presented to the entire Briscoe staff to make sure that they were part of the process and make sure that they knew what was going on, and also to keep the enthusiasm up. The Briscoe staff is very excited. They went from, for some reason, thinking that they were never going to have a new building and they were going to be in Briscoe forever, to seeing the possibilities of what might happen as we look at a new building. We also did another session on the 19th, and on December 12th, they're actually going to do a visioning session with the Briscoe staff, so one more. So part of what you will see in those huge volumes are the results of all those visioning meetings, all of the information that was collected in that, and some thoughts around what makes the most sense as we move forward. So our focus has been on 21st century teaching and learning practices. The present building does kind of get in our way on occasion, but what we're trying to do from an educational practice standpoint is hit 21st century teaching. They did a SCOG analysis. Most of you probably did a SWOT analysis at one time in your life. SCOG analysis is just what David would prefer to call it rather than SWOT. We did 21st century learning goals, so the group came up with some specific goals for what their program would look like. 21st century design patterns, so we had pictures of other schools and the way their classrooms look and the way their workspace looks, and what kinds of things that we could actually do from an educational standpoint. Develop some guiding principles on what this project will look like from a program standpoint. And finally, we did some key spaces and adjacencies. So don't think that's a building, we're not building around classrooms, but this is to get the staff to think about the adjacencies and how should the classrooms be next to each other, what should be part of the team space or the neighborhood space, how are we going to make sure the fifth and sixth grade is separate from the seventh and eighth grade, but also make it flexible enough that as you have a 5-8 building develop, that all four grades can work together more than you would want to initially do. So those are just some thought-provoking ideas. We've actually advanced a long way from these drawings at this point, from the standpoint of looking at adjacencies. But it looks at flexible space, clusters of learning, greeting and gatekeeping, so very much thinking about the security as well. So the gatekeeping function is a security function, because we have to think about the security in the building. Galleries and branding, so there's ways to display around the building that weren't available before, to make sure the kids' work is constantly present as you're in the building, so that the kids can see it, so parents can see it, and so the community can see it. And transparency is, a lot of use of glass. And the interesting part at the school committee meeting is, when they were looking at something like that, the first question was, if you've got a lot of glass, how do you deal with security and lockdowns and those kinds of things? And it's interesting, because they look at it from a sightline standpoint. So while you can have transparency, you have to make sure- So while you can have transparency, you have to make sure that there are some sightlines that can protect the kids in any situation that we're dealing with. Next, we talked about small school learning environments. So we're already teamed at Briscoe, so it's moving the teams into the new building. Right now, we're not necessarily in classrooms that are conducive to teachers working together, but they are next to each other for the most part. This would actually give them the ability to move in and out of space. Distributed leadership and oversight. So the nice part is that Briscoe right now has an administrator on each floor. So as we look at this, it would be an administrator in each of the environments, whether it's a five, six, or seven, eight. So that distributed leadership is something that's easy for us to do because we're already doing it. Distributed dining. So one of the issues that Briscoe has always been, right now, lunches, which cause scheduling problems. So what we're looking at now is distributing one kitchen, but multiple areas where kids can eat, which then would allow us to maybe look at two lunches rather than the numbers we're running right now, which would free the schedule up to provide better learning time. And also give spaces where kids and teachers can go and learn and work. Branch libraries. We're also looking at making sure the materials are available for the kids throughout the building, not just in the library, and how do we create that kind of space? Integration of STEAM. The reason it doesn't say STEM anymore is if you read Daniel Pink, you understand that our advantage from an engineering standpoint has always been design. So we have a very strong art program. That art program is very interested in being part of the science, technology, engineering and math, so it's more of a STEAM approach. And then indoor-outdoor connections. How can you make it easy for kids to go in and out of the building? What does that space look like outside? Is it a science space? Is it a space to be able to hang out? Is it a space for kids to get out because it's adjacent to the cafeteria if they're done eating? So there's some opportunities there. And then flexible and adaptable space. So looking at rooms that have a divider in it that allows that to be a much larger space. Places for kids to be able to go and work, but adults can still see them. So there's a lot of designs and some ideas that as we move forward, you'll all get to see. Experiential, hands-on, project-based learning. We're really looking for places where kids can do project-based learning, not just in science, but in science. And looking at ways in which kids, because one of the challenges always with project-based learning is the fact that the kids make something, then they have to tear it down because the next group of kids is coming in. So how do we create a space where we won't have to tear those projects down and put them away? And then finally, schools without walls. We're not building schools without walls. That's actually there because that was a buzzword at one time. And almost every school without walls I know of has built walls in some way, shape or form. So that's not really what we're looking at, but we're looking for a much more fluid approach to the ways in which kids teach, are taught, and ways in which kids can learn. So all of the work that Beverly did beforehand has been incredibly positive and has helped a great deal. So we know in all of the groups that we talked about, that the school committee met with earlier, we want a 5-8 grade configuration, co-located 5, 6, 7, 8 schools, team teaching neighborhoods, small learning communities, personalized instruction and experience. So personalized instruction does not mean individual education plans. It means that we're customizing the instruction for all kids and we have the ability, within the context of the facility, we have to be able to customize it. Technology infusion, again, we've had some initial conversations about that, but again, we won't really know exactly what the technology's going to look like, other than the fact that we'll have to have a robust infrastructure. That much we know. And it will be wireless. That much we know. Maker-builder spaces, so places that kids can work on projects, small and large group work areas, too. We want to be able to have the ability for a team to get in a space that they're right next to, to have a team meeting. If they wanted to start their morning off with all of the kids in one space to have a town meeting, as an example, they would be able to do that because they would have that kind of space. STEAM and its integration to academic neighborhoods, again, how do we create the opportunity for art to work with science, technology and math? A lot of it has to do with how close they are to each other and how easy it is to be able to do that. Technology and integration, we're looking at multimedia. So one of our real strong feelings is that we should have a close relationship with BevCam at the middle school as well, because middle school kids love to broadcast. So it's a great opportunity for us to be able to do that and have a lab that will make that easy. One of the things that was asked before is how are we going to rate? So so far, we actually, AI3 submitted a summary of what their findings were so far. So essentially, the eight options that Mark talked about are all across the top. And those checks represent the answers to each of those questions based on what the option actually is. So you can see it pretty quickly hones down to either newer renovation of 5 through 8 school on the Cabot Street site. While that still says Briscoe Tigers, just to make sure the mayor noticed, I put Beverly Middle School on there for our first slide, because we're trying to get away from calling it Briscoe. We've had to so far because MSBA sees it as the Briscoe project, but we really are trying to get away from a specific name at this point because it's a little too early. And those, again, are just a quick summary of the dates that Mark went over and the benchmarks that we have. That's it. Thank you.
Questions for Dr. Hershey from the committee, from the council? Very good, yeah. Great job. Next, I'd like to invite our municipal director of finance, Brian Ailes, to come up to give us a municipal finance overview for the foreseeable future.
Thank you. It's my pleasure to be here tonight to talk a little bit about the city's financial outlook and its fiscal health. We've had a number of discussions with many of you here and the key decision-makers in the city about various aspects of the city's finances and how it relates to school issues or, you know, certain projects that come before the council or various budget items that we discuss at our typical meetings and every day. So I wanted to provide a very thorough context that we're looking at when we are looking out about five years. And I would really define it as the city's fiscal health. We all know what it means to have personal health, but what we're really talking about here, as one expert puts it, is the extent to which a local government's financial resources exceed its spending obligations. Another expert has a different opinion. My personal favorite definition is the ability of a municipality to meet its current and future financial obligations, and those obligations that are necessary to deliver effective public services to its residents. That's why we're all here. So the real question is, how do you measure this? You know, and there are really three key components to measuring this that we're going to talk about tonight. The revenue composition and what our expected revenue flows look like in the very near future, what our current and future obligations carry, and that's basically the spending side of the equation, and what our reserve balances are and how they play a role in the city's fiscal health as well. Now, as we go through this, I'm going to list a number of assumptions. We're going out five years. Those assumptions are just that. They're not foregone conclusions. They're to be taken in context. When we put all these assumptions together, it's going to paint a picture for you all. And as you see these assumptions, you may agree with some of them. You may think some are too high, some are too low, and use that information and that perspective to view the end portrait, because it may shift depending upon how you feel about some of these assumptions. So as we look at our revenue, this is our FY15 revenue composition of the city. So you can see that the largest piece of the pie, 83.35% of our revenue comes from the tax levy. 13% comes from state aid. The other 3.5% comes from local receipts like building permits, dog licenses, and you can name a number of different types of receipts that the city receives. And the other category represents chargebacks from various funds such as enterprise funds or parking receipt funds, cemetery funds, that the city receives some revenue for. But what's important about this is I want to illustrate what the trend is showing, because if I go back five years to what the revenue composition looks like, you can see that there's a shift from the government aid and other category into the tax levy category. And that's because the growth in those areas are disproportionate. And if I were to line up every year from 2010 to 2015, you'd see that every year, the tax levy percentage would increase a bit as a percentage of the whole city's budget. And consequently, the government aid and the other categories would decrease every year. So we want to be mindful of that because as we project into the future, we want to illustrate the same type of philosophy, because this is what historically has been what happens. So when we look into 16, 17, 18, 19 and 20, what I've done here is built in some assumptions. Again, they're just that. They're not foregone conclusions. But I've assumed that there's a 1.25, excuse me, growth in government aid. Some may argue that that's a little bit too aggressive, especially since a recent 9C cut reduced some government and school aid. But history has shown that that's a reasonable assumption. A 3% annual in local, growth in local receipts, and that's the historical trend, so I'm just projecting that forward. 2.5% annual growth in tax revenue, which is represented by the Prop 2.5 cap, and a 1.1% annual new growth. And that is the recent average over the last five years. We do know that our most recent growth factor is a little bit higher than that, but I think it's prudent to not plan from the peak of the mountain or the valley of the mountain, but from the midstream. So as you look at those assumptions, it sets expected revenue levels. So the second part of the equation is the expenditure side of things. So there's a vast more, I should say, there's a lot more categories when it comes to the expenditure side of the equation, because there's so many different line items that we're dealing with when we pass a budget, many of you know. So we're going to go through a few of the key ones, which act as the biggest levers within the budget, because as this plays out year after year, we're going to realize whether our assumptions are close, whether they're too high, too low, and we're going to understand how that's impacting the end picture. So in FY15, the city adopted a budget of $110.5 million. So that's our base point. So if we, moving forward, decide to, and again, these are just assumptions, fund our pension liability at the funding schedule that's currently on the table. That's a 4.5% increase. Currently, our unfunded liability for the city, for our pension liability, is $85.9 million. This level of increased spending will make the city solvent by 2031, will be, and then you'll see a drop-off. So this is actually the current expenditure schedule to fund the pension liability. So if you look at the 2015 number, which is highlighted in red, it's $9.2 million. Of that $9.2 million, the city pays 96.1% of that. And that's what was appropriated this year. And you can see the significant increases year over year. But what you should also notice is in 2031, when theoretically we're solvent or we've, you know, paid our pension liability, you see a significant drop-off. And that will be a real drop-off, that those funds potentially could be made available to fund some other liabilities that the city has, such as OPEB liabilities or other costs or, you know, I'm sure you all could come up with a number of opportunities that we could use that money for. But as you can see, the highest payment here is $17.7 million in 2030. Significant amount of money. If we were to increase the school budget for $600,000 next year, which represents the lost, anticipated lost revenue, when we relocate the central office and the preschools throughout the city to the McEwen School, we will lose the revenue that we're currently receiving from renting out that space. You're all aware of that. And if we provide an additional 3% increase in the school budget, what would that look like? So this year, we appropriated 49.4 to the schools. We also had a VOC appropriation, which is our regional vocational school, and we appropriated 2.4 there for a total school appropriation in 15 of $51.7 million. If we add the 600, increase it by 3%, next year's appropriation conceivably could be $53.9 million. Again, going into FY17, and so on and so on. So you get the assumptions that we're building into this. The next assumption is to budget employee benefits at 3% annual increase. This includes healthcare, workers' comp, unemployment comp, life insurance, and all of those. We've been fortunate in the city that our growth in those areas have been below the industry norm. But the law of averages will tell you that at some point, we will be more in line with the industry norm. And we've been fortunate because we have stop-loss insurance in place to guard against large claims and mitigate our risk. But even though we've enjoyed a 1% to 2% growth in our healthcare costs because we're self-insured and some of the other factors I noted, the industry standard is more like 6% or 7% growth in this area. So below the industry standard, but above, you know, our recent successes is probably a fair place to budget this at. Now we're at debt service. So we've got a number of projects that we're still paying debt service on, so we'll continue to pay those obligations. But as you heard earlier tonight, we've got a middle school project that we'll be looking to borrow for in the very near future. So I'm bringing that debt onto our debt service schedules over the next four years. And here's what that looks like. Many of you may have seen this. This is an excerpt from our capital expenditure plan, which lays out every project that we've borrowed for that we're currently still paying debt for. And then the bottom half shows all of the new debt that will be permanently bonded in the very near future. So you can see that in FY15, the total current and proposed debt service, as it was budgeted, is just under $7 million. However, it peaks in 2019 at $11.5 million. And the important piece on this slide is that you can see the new debts brought on staggered, year over year. And that's intentional, because in an ideal world, you'd be bringing on debt in a staggered way as debt's falling off. But if you look at the top half, our existing debt, we have no movement in our existing debt. That is, nothing falls off of the debt schedule till 2020. So it creates this budgetary pressure in FY2017 through 2019 that we really need to be mindful If we begin to modestly fund our OPEB liability, which is $200 million, these are, OPEB stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits, related to retirees, both on the city and the school side. We pay healthcare for all the retirees. And if we were to begin to fund this outstanding liability, as you can see, even if we did it at $2.5 million a year, that would be, that'd be like 200 years, or 100 years, I should say, to pay it back. So that's a very modest amount. And then lastly, a 1.5% increase to all other municipal spending areas. That's municipal payroll, that's snow and ice removal, that's police, fire, equipment, roofs, you know, capital expenditures, everything else that we haven't already talked about. I'm building in a 1.5, just to paint this picture for everyone. So what does that look like? We go from $110.5 million in FY15 up to in FY20, $131.87 million. And then down below, you can see, when you compare those expenditures up against the projected revenues, it begins to create these budgetary gaps, primarily due to the debt Here's another illustration of how it looks on a line chart. Ideally, you'd like to see those right on top of each other. And this is important to note, too, because you see in FY19, when that debt falls off for some of the older projects, you see the variance begin to become smaller. And if I were to carry this out one or two more years, you would see them come back together. So we know that this is a particular period in time where So we know that this is a particular period in time where we've got budgetary pressure, but the ship will right itself. So last, that gets us to our reserve balances, things that we've been talking about for months now. Here is a chart that shows the history of our reserve balances, and you can see from FY 11 to FY 14, the previous administration, as well as the current administration, has been very mindful of building and trying to create these balances to weather this storm that we see from FY 17 through FY 19. So in FY 14, we see a balance of just under 9 million. And as we go into FY 15, a big assumption here, there are two assumptions. One is that we operate at a break even, that is, we don't generate a surplus or a deficiency in the year, FY 15. And the second assumption is that the $900,000 that we would anticipate if we close on the McKay School sale would be deposited into these reserves for future use. That gets us to just under 10 million at the end of FY 15. Now, I showed you those variances, those budgetary variances before, so I want to illustrate how quickly this $10 million can dissipate if we were to not make any other adjustments and those assumptions held true. And as a result, in FY 20, you can see that we've got a potential, I say potential because there's so many assumptions built in there, cumulative deficit of almost $5 million. So I put this back up here to now reflect on everything I said. When you think about fiscal health, the ability of a municipality to meet its current and future financial obligations that are necessary to deliver effective public services to its residents, that's really how we need to be viewing all of what we're doing. So I want to add these two comments, that you saw the balances of the reserves, and in FY 20, we estimate that cumulative deficit to be roughly $5 million. However, a 7% to 10% reserve is what's considered healthy. So we're, we need to be mindful of this. And because revenue is mostly fixed, granted their assumptions, but, you know, they're very modest assumptions, we cannot sustain the spending assumptions that we've built into this. How do we fix it? First, we probably need to address OPEB in a less significant, even though it's fairly minor compared to the overall liability, and we need to revisit that. We need to be intent on generating positive operating variances. Don't spend the money if we don't need to. Let it go to a reserve so that we have that money in the future. And we need to start that now. Road and sidewalk work, we've been fortunate, we've been able to have a couple of years where we've been able to provide in the range of 1.6 to $3 million is what we anticipate for 15 and 16, but 17 through 20, we need to revisit that and put those expenditures, possibly adjust them. The middle school construction, we're continuing to do this, but as the mayor said earlier tonight, we won't know the final budget for that project for some time, a few months anyway. But as we begin to refine those, we need to be very mindful of areas that we can possibly reduce that budget without impacting the educational goals of the city. In my assumptions, 50 million debt is what's assumed, over 50 million in debt is what's assumed to come on the books in the next four years. So I've also got a task before me, which is to really be a little creative with the debt payment models, and really kick the tires hard on different repayment options. There are a number of, you know, principal first, equal principal payments, and I've also built in some interest assumptions that may or may not hold true, depending upon the market. And we have to revisit every other previous assumption that I've mentioned. So the school budget cannot increase at 3%. Salary increases need to be planned carefully and mindfully. And the funding schedule for pension liability will likely need to be adjusted. We have an opportunity every two years to revisit that, and we may need to come FY 16. So I leave you with one final thought, and that's, every decision we make really needs to be viewed through this lens. And I also want to say that this, this laying out of all these variables is designed to help you all see clearly as you're making decisions about what the city's facing with. It's not to, you know, get the lights flashing, get the alarms going, you know, panic, because this is manageable, we can do it, we've got a lot of smart people in the room, and we will do this, we'll make this work, and we'll be a stronger city as a result of being more mindful of this potential pitfall. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Great, thank you very much, Brian. Are there questions from the council or the committee? Mr. Ailes?
Yeah, Brian, can you talk to the 2030 deadline of meeting pension obligations? Is that a legal obligation? Is that an aspirational obligation? If it's not met, what are the consequences? Are there options for pushing that back at all?
Sure. Well, everything the city does from a financial perspective is viewed by lending institutions, Department of Revenue, auditors. So this is something that is looked at very closely. The law requires that municipalities fund their unfunded pension liability by 2040. It used to be, I believe, 2032, 2034, somewhere in that range. But because of the downturn in the economy and the crash in the stock market, cities' assets within these funds depleted so much that they needed to extend the solvency date out to 2040 legally. So that, in our perspective, and the previous funding schedule that was adopted, is no reason to necessarily change course of action, because we're aggressively trying to fund this obligation in a way that allows us to, at some point in the near future, if you consider 15 years the near future, be able to divert those resources elsewhere and not have this pending liability over our head. So even though we're still on schedule to fund it at 2031, we'll be solvent, we have legally till 2040 to do that. Now, adjusting that schedule could be seen as a sign of financial weakness, because you're adjusting obligations that you've already committed to. However, every two years, we're required to revalue our systems' assets, revalue the retirees, and the actuariais actually redo this formula, revise our pension liability, and allow us to reset the funding schedule. So there is opportunity to adjust this in the next two years.
To what degree does the market, the stock market, affect the potential upside to your assumptions?
Significantly. All of our assets are held with PRRIT, which is the Retirement Investment Trust. And if there's an uptick or downtick in the market, it affects how much of our long-term pension liability we have in the bank. So if there is a downturn, you could see our funding ratio go down. If there's an uptick, you can see it go up. However, the actuariais have built in reasonable, long-term interest projections or growth projections, which are designed to weather some of those, you know, dips and peaks a little bit.
Thank you.
Sure.
Mayor Cahill.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Ailes, looking at the, looking at whether we stay on course for 2031 or extend out. If we were able to stay on course, as you said, once we complete getting to 100% funded, we have the ability to address other needs with money that would no longer need to be budgeted in that direction. At the same time, I just mentioned that I've been working with other mayors and other municipal leaders through Mass Municipal, and we keep raising this question of why we ever need to be 100% funded. The assumption with that is that one day municipal government will shut the doors and no longer exist. There's been municipal government in Massachusetts for 300-plus years. So, you know, we want to push back on that, on that whole set of assumptions, and look towards what's really a reasonable percentage of fully funded to get to, to be fiscally sound. Recognizing that, as Councilor Housman said, as the market fluctuates, you could find yourselves having built up to a 70, 75, 80% of funded level, and then have that knocked down a bit with the downturn in the stock market. So, you know, it's a moving target and will continue to be, but we need to devote significant resources year in and year out to move us ever, you know, forward towards that 100, but we will, as I said, we will work with the legislature and, you know, and other policymakers to try to get to a more realistic number than 100%. I just, I don't see that as being something that, that with, you know, with ebbs and flows in the economy, I don't see that as being a number that really is realistic when it comes to the needs of municipalities throughout the state to meet all of our programmatic and service needs. To get north of where we are, we're at about 52% funded, to get significantly north of there is important. Whether or not it gets us to 100% at any point in time is, I think, a policy question we'll continue to grapple with.
Council Freitas.
Brian, that was an excellent presentation.
Thank you.
And one of the suggestions would be, whenever you have a complex discussion for us, if you could do it visually like that, because that really works for me. Anyway, we dropped 3.5 million dollars into the stabilization fund last night, so that has to, we have to be on a precipice for another bond rating upgrade, I would think, or are we close? And the question there is, some of the older debt that goes back to the 2000s, I think you showed, is there a callback provision? Is there something where we can consolidate some of that older debt? Have we looked at some of that opportunities there?
Great, great comment. Yes, there's always opportunity to refinance, for lack of a better term. The limitations are dependent upon the project and how much we've borrowed for already, because different projects carry with them different terms that you can borrow for. So there would need to be a thorough review of all the projects there, a review of what the remaining interest rates on those projects are versus the current rates, and we absolutely need to do that in the very near future, yes.
And the other question about being on the verge of another upgrade, are we close?
You know, it's tough to say. We were upgraded earlier this year, in the spring, to AA-, which is one below the top. It's a very good bond rating. The mayor and I had a conversation the other day with one of our auditors, and they gave us the range of some municipalities that have above 10% in reserves. Those are the AAA-rated municipalities that you can see, because they've got enough reserves to weather the significant fluctuations in both the revenue and expenditure sides.
And with the combination of the free cash and the stabilization fund, you're above 7?
We're above 7, below 10.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Councilor Silver?
I just want to compliment Mr. Ailes, the administration, for this. I agree with Council Freitas, the presentation was fantastic. I almost wish we had this presentation last night, Mr. Ailes, it would have been, and I say that, I'm not even joking. I mean, it would, it really would have.
We all would have got a little more sleep.
It really would have given a lot more context to the decisions and the conversations that we had last night about the tax rate and setting that, because I think oftentimes we don't get the big picture all the time, we don't get that information regularly. And while there's great communication between the administration and the council, it just comes in drips and drabs, just because that's the nature of the work that we do. And with the full-time staff working on this constantly, this is the way you think about government, this is the way you think about the approach, and that, I really appreciate that. But it would, it certainly would have been helpful, and I would actually encourage you, even next year during pre-budget and budget process, do something very similar to this, just so when we're talking about spending, and we're talking about what needs to get funded, that a comprehensive view of what's happening this year, five years out, is, you know, that big picture is taken into consideration. I really appreciate you giving that to us tonight.
My pleasure.
Council Silver, I sympathize with your wanting to see this last night, but I'm actually glad we got the presentation this evening, because my colleagues on the committee and I are now in the very early stages of our FY 16 budget process. And so this has been useful information for us as well. We will be spending, or be responsible for spending 50 cents on the dollar of the municipal budget next year, and I think this will be useful information for us to take home as well.
Certainly. Councilor Lang?
Brian, is the number that we're going to be using now for the debt service, 50 million for the school, did you say that?
It's one of those assumptions that we've got to plug in there. We continue to refine the project budget, we've got very, very preliminary estimates, but yes, I've got plugged in there, I think, 55.
And that's a lower or higher number than what we had in the capital expenditure plan for this year?
That's a lower number than the total project budget of the capital expenditure plan.
Just lower, okay.
I think what's really driving some of the costs, although we still need to refine the budget figures, is that, you know, the per-square-foot building cost estimates are a bit higher than the last school building project we've done, or even the most recent posts to the MSBA website, which shows you, you know, cost per square foot. And part of that is a result of, you know, economy turning around, increased petroleum costs, you name it, inflation.
Thank you.
Anything else from Mr. Ailes? Thank you, Brian, very impressive presentation, very informative. The third item on our agenda is a presentation by one of my colleagues, Lorraine Visnick, our colleague from Ward 6, who's been passionately involved with a number of initiatives around the city for a number of years now. And tonight she's going to speak about, well, the title is composting on our agenda, but it's more than composting, it's reusing, recycling, reducing waste. And so I give you Lorraine Visnick.
Thank you. I want to thank President Paul and President Paul for letting me speak this evening. We'll see, okay. So I like to begin every presentation with this question, why should you pay attention? Why should you care about this? And Paul, the Pauls, the Presidents, asked me to talk about composting, but I widened the topic to be waste reduction, and why you should all care about that is because it's really tough to follow Brian, too, and his bad news about our financial outlook, but this is actually an area where we can save potentially a significant amount of money. So every piece of waste that we send to be tipped costs us money. So composting is one piece of waste reduction, and at the very core of how we can reduce waste is education. So we have some guests here tonight who are going to speak after I get through my slides. They're going to talk about how we're educating our youth to just live a life where they reduce the amount of waste they produce. And what they do produce, they either recycle or they compost, and they will carry that with them, and we'll just be in a different place, we're already in a different place. And the last piece is that every, in Beverly, when we send our waste, quote-unquote, away, it goes to an incinerator, and regardless of your political affiliation. President Paul, you may or may not believe in global warming, but regardless, there is a certain evolution.
If I said something to you, I would be considered as a bully.
I didn't say which President Paul. You took that upon yourself.
Which one of us started the meeting by quoting John F. Kennedy?
There you go. She's lucky to be sitting next to Matthew.
So in Beverly, this is our, what I believe to be our waste reduction landscape. So we actually have two community groups that are very active. One's called Buy Nothing Beverly, and the other's Reduce, Recycle, Reuse, and Repurpose. And both of those groups are very active in social media, and they basically trade things, they swap things, they find other people who want to reuse what they have. So things don't go in the garbage in the first place, they don't even go in the recycle bin necessarily. Very, very active in the social media circles. We have at each school and at each administrative building textile recycling boxes. I'll have some more slides and some... building textile recycling boxes. I'll have some more slides and some actual real hard numbers on that coming up. Three of our five elementary schools have green teams. This is like an after-school club. The children are learning with a teacher and with some number of mentors, other adults, all about green issues. They sometimes do skits for the rest of the school. They help organize some of the other things that happen in the schools. Again, we're going to get to something in another slide called Waste Free Wednesday. They help facilitate the share tables, and we're going to talk about that in a little bit, too. Our school nurses have instituted something called Taste Test Tuesdays. So in the elementary schools, alliteration is really big. Like, if you have a happy name, more children participate. So we have Waste Free Wednesdays and Taste Test Tuesdays. And the idea is that if the children are allowed, in a very non, you know, non-stressful situation, to try something new, and they taste it in their classroom with their peers, you know, they're encouraged to have a certain level of participation, then when that food is on their plate from the cafeteria, they're way more likely to eat it instead of just throwing it out, or on the days that we compost, instead of just throwing it into the compost. And then finally, we have the actual composting piece, and we're going to talk a lot about that. So these slides have a ton of print on them. I don't expect you to read them verbatim, but the point is that textiles alone take up a ton of our garbage, and there's all kinds of statistics around how much the average person throws in the waste each year. So it's estimated that the average American discards seventy pounds of textile waste per year. So that's, if we compute that for the Beverly population of approximately forty thousand residents, that's thirteen hundred and ninety-two, almost fourteen hundred tons. At our current rate, it's seventy-seven fifty per ton to be tipped at the incinerator. So the graphic on the right, down at the bottom, is actually pretty telling. When you have something that's reusable textile-wise, we have Beverly bootstraps here, and they're a wonderful organization, but when you have something that's torn or stained, it actually has a quote-unquote "second life" and can absolutely be reused in some other facility. So I especially like number two, the lone sock, and we all have a whole, probably a huge pile of those in our house. Those can be changed into pillow stuffing, and there's all kinds of uses. So those items that are stained or ripped or torn can go into those textile boxes, and the real benefit is not only are we saving the tipping fees on the city side, but our schools are generating income. The program that we have, the Bay State Textiles, actually pays us to put items in those boxes. So not only are we saving the money on the city side, but we're generating income for our schools. So this chart, we started in May of 2013, right before school got out, and you can see in the columns how much money each school has generated. And Briscoe has the most amount of weight, it has the best location for its box, it's two boxes, actually. Centerville is right up there, especially for the number of students that it has, right? It has the smallest number of students for the elementary schools, but it has a very, a pretty good location for its box, and a very active communication and a very active green team. St. Mary's School, way down at the bottom, they just joined. So again, if we look right across the bottom, total since the program started, we've generated a hundred and ninety-one thousand pounds, which translates into almost ninety-six hundred dollars in income for our schools. Now I'm going to talk about each of the, at each of the school levels, what are we doing? So at our middle school level, I chose to start at the middle school level, because this is really where things started from a PTO and from the Beverly Education Foundation funding point of view. Those of you who grew up in Beverly, went to Nature's Classroom when you were at Briscoe or at Memorial, and one of the first things they do, for those of you who don't know, a buffet-style meal, you can take whatever you want for food, and you get to throw out whatever you didn't eat. And so at the end of the very first meal, they weigh how much waste is there. And the children are challenged with each subsequent meal to waste less, and every single meal's waste is weighed. So the children learn over the course of the week, while they're away, while they're experiencing every subject matter in nature, they learn how to reduce their waste. And this waste report is called the ORT report. So the Beverly Education Foundation and the PTO at Briscoe invested money to bring in the group called Changes Simple as an arts and enrichment programming option. And either right before or right after the children return, either right before they leave or right after they come back from Nature's Classroom, they're given some environmental education, and then there's been traditionally a one-day composting event. Try to reduce the waste in that cafeteria and where they just came back from taking fewer and fewer amounts of food that they didn't want in the cafeteria, it just kind of fits very nicely there. So that has happened for two years. And now this year, they have a very revived green team and a wonderful teacher by the name of Mr. Yurchik. He has really instituted recycling in the school, throughout the school, paper and plastic recycling, as well as a full compost program. So it's no longer just a one-day composting event, but it's happening every single day. And the last little bullet there that I want to bring to everyone's attention is, if you have a plastic container of milk or juice, and you throw it in the garbage, then it, first thing, the plastic could have been recycled, but second thing, it weighs a lot more with its liquid inside of it. So at our elementary schools, we actually do a really good job of having the children pour out any extra liquid, but at the other two schools, at our other two levels of schools, the middle school and the high school, we don't have a formal pour-off type of facility in place. So I believe that Ryan has done that at Briscoe, and we probably need to get busy doing that here at the high school as well. So. At the elementary school level, as I mentioned earlier, three of the five schools have green teams. Those PTOs at the elementaries have brought in Changes Simple to do environmental programming, and it started again as an arts and enrichment type of addition. What that means is it's above and beyond the regular, everyday programming that they get from their teachers. But then Changes Simple went out and wrote a grant, and they were a winner of the Cummings Foundation Hundred K for One Hundred. And so last year and this year, at zero, at zero dollars, for those of you who love to count beans, at zero dollars to our city, Changes Simple is in our schools, teaching every third, fourth, and fifth grader environmental education lessons. We also have via a different grant through the Be Healthy Beverly organization, in the back of every elementary school now, there's gardens. The children are learning the life cycle, and some of those vegetables that are grown in those gardens that are being served in the veggie bars. The veggie bars are thanks to grant money. As I mentioned earlier, we have Taste Test Tuesdays and Waste Free Wednesdays, and our cafeterias in our elementary schools absolutely do recycling. Whether they're doing a compost, a waste-free day or not, they, the children are taught to pour off their liquids and recycle their plastic, separate from the garbage that gets thrown out. So this is a picture, it's a lovely picture, of the total amount of garbage after a Waste Free Wednesday at one of our elementary schools. So over three hundred, probably closer to three hundred and fifty students ate lunch, and this is the totality of what was thrown in the garbage can. Everything else was either recycled or composted. So you could see, if we did that at each of our schools, every single day, at every level of our schools, that we'd be sending a lot less trash to the incinerator, creating a lot less pollution and saving a lot in our tipping fees. So that brings us to this lovely building, our high school. In last year, the environmental club, with the help of Changes Simple, again, they donated their time. They came in, they talked to the students, they explained to them the benefits of composting, and the students really kind of took over. Dan's in the back, so Dan might speak to that a little bit, but I have definitely, Rob Fratato's going to come up and talk about composting here at the high school. Very cool thing that happened is, we started, I don't know whose purple hands those are, maybe Sharon Kishida's, so we put next to each compost station, as we rolled out the composting event, an empty bowl and just that little sign that said "whole fruit." And what we wanted was to find out how many children were just throwing away things that were totally untouched, that could have been eaten by someone else. And I mentioned Beverly bootstraps earlier. We have a food pantry, and it's always in need of supplies. So we were not actually allowed to reclaim this food, so the process of pulling untouched items out and giving them to someone else is called food reclamation. You're reclaiming it out of the waste. It never actually went in the garbage, but, okay, whatever. So instead of the children putting it in the compost, we asked them to self-sort and take those whole items that had not yet been touched and put it in this bowl. And then several days, for about two weeks, we did this, and we itemized how much we got. So this is a picture, this is an example, after one lunch here at the high school, one of the compost stations. In the very beginning, we had like four or five different compost stations. So again, if you extrapolate this out, and you say, all right, there's four or five of these at each of the three lunches, you can see there's a lot of food that could be reclaimed, kept out of the garbage, given to someone who's in need of that food, who's actually hungry. That process of itemizing those items for those two weeks led to what we now call share tables. So Nancy Antolini has helped us be able to, children who have food that they don't want, they leave it on a share table, and children who want something extra are allowed to go up to that share table and take it. It's kind of a cool thing. And maybe the next step will be that we'll be allowed to take that food out of the cafeteria and give it to bootstraps. Also in this building, and we've had several conversations about this, our water stations, so the children can take their water bottles, especially around the gym, and refill easily, as opposed to trying to push the button and get the flow of a regular water fountain to fill their water bottle. And I encourage all of you, this video is a seven-minute-long video. It's the Beverly High students composting in the caf and running the video equipment and interviewing each other about how composting is going. And if we had time, I'd love to show that, but we're not going to show that. So those are our three school levels. And then I want to talk for a second about what's happening at our city level, and then I have some guest speakers who are going to come up and actually talk about the composting in the middle school and in the high school. And Changes Simple is actually going to come up and show a really fabulous, like, three-to-five-minute video. So this chart, in all its lovely colors, is unfortunately showing us a trend where the amount that we're sending to the incinerator is actually going up. This is a very bad trend, because the more we send, the more pollution we make and the more money we have to pay. So what can we do about that, or what are some ways that we can possibly improve? And for those of you who don't know, we have a solid waste committee. We have a group whose job it is, and I'm not on that committee, it's kind of a miracle. My husband will be happy there's one thing that I'm not on. So the solid waste committee is looking at some of these things, and if we can get, for any one of these things that we do, we get some number of points. And if you get enough points, then you can get a recycling rebate. So again, it's a way that we could get more money back for doing the right thing, for reducing the amount of waste that we're sending to our incinerator. Again, every time you don't send something to the incinerator, you save that tipping fee, and if we could get a rebate, it would just be that much, much better. So I'm not going to read these items off. We do have a couple of these things in place already. We do score a couple of points already, but we could certainly score some more points if we took up a couple more of these things. In particular, the second bullet, the organics collection, we now have two, the majority of our students, right, all the students in our middle school and all the students in our high school are composting. They're composting in the cafeteria here. Our kitchen staff is composting, and Rob Fratato's going to come up and give some numbers about how much waste has been, that's your signal, Rob, to come up, to how much waste has been diverted. And then after that, actually, Ryan, Ryan's going to come up, and then Changes Simple. So I promise you that we're really, I told each of them, they could only talk for a couple minutes, because I was using most of the time, and we're really close to being done.
Hi. Last January, we initiated the composting program here at the high school. To date, five hundred and twenty-eight totes have been picked up, at an average about eighty percent full. So the estimation is a hundred and twenty-seven yards of material has been diverted from the dumpsters to the compost sites, which, after it breaks down, will be about thirty-three yards of actual compost for local farms and regrowth of the soil.
Those would be the same farms where we get our produce to put in the veggie bars at our elementary school. So it's a very cool full circle.
That's the only numbers I have.
Those are the only numbers you have?
Since, well, actually, since the beginning of this year, we're actually seeing a trend on a higher volume of compost compared to last spring. And the theory behind that was in the springtime, you have more school vacation weeks. You have February vacation, you have April vacation. The seniors here left the end of May, beginning of June, so less volume of students towards the end of the school year. So just in the first three months here, we've had over two hundred totes emptied. And that's probably about five to ten more on average per month than we were in the springtime. So overall, we're about, almost a full year into the program here, and the predictions have been right on cue. We've been thinking maybe between five, six hundred totes a year, and we're just about that rate right now.
And how is the, how are we doing with keeping it clean?
We haven't had any fees on contamination, so that's good. That was actually figured into the process of budgeting for this, was a contamination fee. If they actually have to climb into the compost pile and pick out a lot of trash, they would actually charge us for that service. So we have not got charged for that yet. In November, we started composting at Briscoe. So, there's Ryan.
Thank you, Rob.
All right. Well, thank you, first of all, Lurinda, for inviting me to speak about the whole program and what's actually taking place at Briscoe. I took over the green team this year and identified a couple of the things that we really wanted to see change, and the kids agreed, was the recycling. We weren't doing a full-scale container recycling, and we decided we'd place some collection bins near each of the water bubblers, and that's been going really well, and just diverting that from the trash. And then the composting was the other thing. And I reached out to, not being from around here, I wasn't sure who to speak with about this, and reached out to Changes Simple, because I knew that they were already in our schools, and they were more than willing to help out. Speaking of Sharon Kishida, and just everyone who was around that was involved in something like this, that was aware of it, was willing to help, and it was really nice. It really helped to kick off the program, which, the cafeteria composting, we started, I think it's been almost two full weeks, we started on the, I think it was November seventeenth. And we had, Charlie Purlo was there to help, every single day, to help us monitor the stations, to make sure that the kids weren't coming through and throwing full trays of trash into the composting. And, which, speaking of, I come with authentic compost all over my pants today, or tonight, because I'm that one, as they mentioned, as Rob had mentioned, digging into the compost. At the end of each day, I go through, and I'm like zero contamination, so I'm pulling out all of the trash and sorting through it. But it was really nice. The big thing that happened was, the custodial staff's been a huge support, and they said that we've gone from nine to twelve bags of trash per day to one. And that was the biggest difference, was seeing that, and the kids love seeing this. They're like, they love pouring out the liquids, which is crazy, but they love pouring this out and just seeing the mess that it makes. And then going down the line with the compost and the trash, I told them last week the difference that it's making, and they're all like really excited about that, which is a great thing to see. And we're actually starting up a share table, which is kind of exciting, because custodial staff, it's amazing to see how much, how many full pieces of food actually go into the trash, and we're going to attempt that and see how it goes. the trash, and, um, we're gonna attempt that and see how it goes.
Does anyone have any questions for, uh, Mr. Yurchuk while he's here? Thank you very much, Ryan.
Thank you.
Great job.
I have questions, I don't know if it's, for Ryan, um, maybe, um, Lorinda. So one of the slides showed the trash that we're sending to the incinerators each month, I think, um, over the last few years, and you had said that we're seeing an increase in that, in trash we're sending to the incinerator. Recently, I think in this most recent trash contract, we, we just paid for an addition, additional week of recycling, so we're getting cycling collection every week, but it doesn't seem to be impacting the amount of trash that we're sending to the incinerator. I, I don't know if anyone has.
Exactly, so that, that's why it's such a bad trend. So, so if you, if you look here, and, and I apologize for the colors, it maybe look a little better on the computer.
I'm colorblind, too, so.
Oh, you are? Really?
Yeah.
Sorry. So, so this, this is, um, this year's September, this is last year's September, so this September, we sent more, uh, to be tipped than the year before, which was a little more than the year before.
Right.
Which is certainly a lot less than, than the year before that, right? So fifteen, fourteen, thirteen, twelve, right? Twelve was a bad year, look at all the spikes, all the spikes are twelve. Um, so, so we're, we're, we're both trending up here, so if you look at this one, and then it goes up, we're trending up month to month, and we're trending up compared to the year before. So it's, it's a bad trend, I don't have a reason, I don't know why.
Does Sharon, does Sharon have a reason, or does Charlie have any input on that? I'm just curious to know if anyone has any insight on that, because it is a strange, uh, or, Estelle, please.
Yeah, I mean, just, if you guys can help me. But there's, even though we have more opportunity to recycle, that's not necessarily encouraging people who weren't already recycling to recycle more.
I agree.
It's more convenient for me because I have a reasonable amount to deal with on a weekly basis. But, um, there's really, there's no incentive to reduce waste because we have a five-barrel limit, which is essentially not limited at all. It's really like, until we go down to a one or two-barrel limit, there's zero incentive to reduce our waste as a community, so.
Having that limit is one of the things that can get us points for the rebate. Go to the mic, Lorinda, go to the mic. So having, having a limit, having a one-barrel limit, uh, that's the very first bullet on this slide. So if, if we had a, a limit, you, either with or without the first barrel being for free, then, uh, we would gain some of those quote-unquote "points," which would then allow us to get a rebate from the, the Mass Department of Environmental Protection around recycling.
But it's not for free if we're paying to pay for our trash.
Right, so, so I am not a member of the solid waste committee, can I say that again on camera so that my husband can be happy that there's something that I haven't signed up for? But, um, I, I would say that, that perhaps, you know, the, the, the city council should hear from them about some of their plans, because if we went to a pay-to-throw, if your first barrel was free, for instance, and then you were paying every barrel after that, the trash fee could perhaps be eliminated in lieu of a pay-as-you-throw, and, and then that would get us the points as well, so.
Yeah, because part of the whole discussion when we originally entered into that new contract was, it would be kind of an investment, we'll invest into weekly recycling, but we thought we'd capture at least, maybe not its full cost, but some of its cost on the other end. And we're clearly not seeing that, in fact, we're seeing a digression.
Over the last few months, absolutely, there's, there's a, a poor trend over the last few months. But again, there's, there's no incentive, um, you know, so I'm a family of six, although five, with one at college, but he was just home and he generated a lot of trash. I have literally, um, because tonight's trash night, I have one barrel of trash for a family of six, and I have a barrel of recycling, and I have a barrel of, of paper, cardboard. So it's, it's not even a barrel of trash, it's literally one bag of trash. But I have three children who haunt me to do that. So all right, so we're ready now, oh, okay, another question?
I just, um, I don't disagree with Councilor Rand's comment about the lack of incentive, but I guess that doesn't explain the spike, right? I mean, that was the same policy that was in place last year.
Right.
Curious.
And just, I mean, last year when we had the discussion about trash, we, uh, the barrel limit was ten, so we cut it in half. And I think that's something, once again, we need to take a look at. The rationale last year was the fact that we're charging people for the trash pickup, you don't want to put too many constraints on them, but, uh, can you imagine a family of, say, six people, or five at my house, putting out, being able to put out, uh, even five barrels of trash, let alone ten, right? So it's definitely something we can work on as a community.
Do you, do you know if, do you know if the-
One thing that I think people should know of, even with the five-barrel limit, if, we're supposed to be enforcing in the city that if there is recyclable material that's visible in the trash, the hauler's not supposed to pick it up. So that's a spot that we could really be improving, uh, if that, the waste is left, if you can see cardboard in it, if you can see plastic in it, we shouldn't be picking it out.
Do I need to repeat that into the microphone? She said if the, if, regardless of how many barrels you put out, if the hauler can see that there's recyclables in that garbage, they're not supposed to pick it up, it's supposed to be enforced that way. And I believe the implication is that it's not being enforced by the hauler. I would say, relatively speaking, my personal opinion is that, uh, I would love to see our contract with JRM redone, because we're reducing the amount of waste at each of our schools by a tremendous amount by composting, yet we're seeing no savings. There's no financial benefit for them having to come here less, less often, right? They now come here maybe once a week, where they used to come five days a week last year because we had so much garbage every day. And, and we see no financial benefit to fewer visits, right? They're saving, they're saving a lot of money by not coming here, and now not going to Briscoe every day to pick up garbage, they can go just once a week. We don't measure our schools, it's just a bulk rate, but again, we've decreased tremendously the amount that we're hauling out of our schools, and, uh, so that would, that would be my ideal. So, uh, unless there's any more questions, oh, yes, Mr. Lang.
I just have a comment, too, about the whole recycling issue. It also discriminates against the, the older people in the communities as well. I mean, they're, they're putting out one bag and they're recycling, and they're still paying their full, um, amount, so I think they can get rebates. But I think, you know, pay-as-you-throw is probably a better way to go than what we're doing right now. I would agree that we should probably try to redo the JRM contract and see what we can do to increase the recycling, because the communities that have to pay, uh, they really have a much higher rate than Beverly does.
Do we know if the recycling committee's working on a renewed effort to look at pay-as-you-throw? Mr. Perlow?
I'm sorry, repeat the question, please.
Jason? I, I just had a question about, uh, the recycling committee and, um, or the solid waste committee, and whether or not you're taking a renewed look at, um, the concept of a pay-as-you-throw program.
Absolutely, we're, uh, considering that as a primary form of waste reduction, and we're looking at having Waste Zero come in, who's the, one of the country's largest organizers of such municipal programs, they're doing it for over a hundred and fifty cities and towns in the state of Massachusetts alone, and they have created a wonderful presentation tailored just for Beverly, one of their people, uh, Landolphe, happens to be a Beverly native, and we're looking at having a community presentation for this, anyone can come, and this will probably be, we were gonna do it, uh, this year, but we'll probably do it in January.
That's great.
Thank you.
I agree with Councilor Lang, it's something we should definitely take another look at.
Thank you all.
All right, so we're like almost ready to play the video.
No pressure.
As long as that's still all right. Okay, oh, and this is, so this is Lauren, Lauren Belmonte from Change is Simple.
Hi there, um, thank you for having me. I'm the executive director of Change is Simple, uh, we're an environmental education nonprofit located right here in Beverly. Uh, we started almost four years ago, this is our fourth school year in the Beverly Public Schools. We're still a really small team, but we've made some huge impacts, educating over sixty-five-hundred students, um, a lot of those students were right here in Beverly. And our programs are, um, environmental science and sustainability-based, but we integrate the Common Core curriculum in math, in English Language Arts, and we're also aligning our programming with the philosophies and objectives of the next generation science standards as well. I'm not gonna say much more, because I feel badly that we're already way over time. Uh, this is our most recent video that will do a much better job at telling you what motivates us and how and what we do. So here you go.
The environment is the most important issue of our time.
Some of the major storm events that we've seen over the past three to five years, I expected that those individual events would trigger an awareness, maybe set off alarms, uh, for the greater population, not just the scientific communities, that something historical, something unanticipated is evolving.
A lot of, a lot of human beings tend to disconnect themselves from the natural environment. We're part of it, and we're depending on it, and, uh, if, uh, if it doesn't survive, we won't survive.
If we don't do more, then the resources of our planet, and our health, and the life of our planet will be in jeopardy.
The amount of information that's just been amassed, it's so strong, as a scientist, the scientific evidence is so overwhelming, that climate change is happening, that, that human beings are the cause of it, that it's time for catalytic change.
It's alarming that people aren't seeing that the health and the environment is directly affecting their own health. So many problems in our society are the symptoms of the degradation of our planet. This is a root cause issue.
Either busy with their lives, checking boxes left and right, fact is, we've got to slow down and take time to take in all of this information. The best time to do it is when people are young.
It's irresponsible of us to not arm our children with this knowledge, so they don't make the same mistakes that we have.
Not just education about what's going on, but education about how to improve what's happening, how to catalyze change, how to affect change.
Education is the most powerful tool to change the world.
Change is simple!
We are a community organization dedicated to creating awareness and working for change.
In addition to education.
We've had incredible impacts by collaborating with businesses, nonprofits, and schools to help make their events and operations more sustainable. We've developed an internship program that spreads our education further and allows college students to gain valuable classroom experience in dozens of schools.
Interning at Change is Simple has been such a great experience because really got to, um, challenge myself, it's also proven to me that teaching environmental education is something I really want to pursue in life.
What drives us and keeps our small team committed is the excitement that we're seeing from the students and the response we're getting from the teachers.
Change is Simple is a program both the kids and the teachers love.
Great job of incorporating the Common Core state standards in a fun and engaging way.
Math and science and social studies components.
They're math, they're reading, they're working together, uh, they're exercising, so it's really the whole package.
By far the best program I have seen presented.
The kids walk out of every class excited, laughing, happy, they've had fun, it's everything you'd want in a science lesson.
Our programming has come from a single lesson with a group of fourth graders on a hot June day four years ago, to a dynamic and powerful curriculum that is inspiring change and creating a movement.
What you're gonna find when you start observing and learning about nature is you're gonna find a passion for it, you're gonna find a passion for learning more about it, for understanding it, for protecting it.
Instead of exclusively teaching biology and chemistry, we focus on how the everyday kid and family can have the biggest impact. Energy, water, waste, carbon footprint, ecosystems, food miles, and so many more. All teach why these topics are important to them, how they are directly connected to and impact the environment every day, they're building math skills, problem-solving skills, they're eating healthier, they're becoming more involved in their community. These experiences are laying the foundation of knowledge for students to realize the connections between their community, their environment, and their own health. Our kids will grow into informed, inquisitive adults that will demand corporate and government responsibility and care for their neighbors and the land that we all share. Our students are realizing they're an active part of a much bigger picture.
We need water, trees, plants to survive.
Just because we have a good life doesn't mean animals do, so we want them, so we want it to be fair with them, too.
Compost it and make more soil so you can have more.
If we help them, they can help the environment, and that helps us live.
Try to make something maybe that will prevent oil to get into all the water.
Cars that don't run on gas.
Before you guys came here, we didn't know a lot about the environment, but now, since you guys have come here a lot, we know a lot.
Change is simple!
The environment affects all of us, no matter what you love.
I love to dance.
I like to do arts and crafts, like paint and draw.
I love to hang out with friends and just do my own thing.
I love how, um, veterans fight for us.
Singing and dancing.
My family.
Try new things.
Play outside.
And I like to play outside, too.
But none of this will matter.
If we don't make changes now.
You must teach me about my planet.
Because I could be the one.
I could be the one.
I could be the one.
Because I could be the one.
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 To change the world.
Do we have any questions from the committee or the council for any of our speakers?
Not a question, but just a comment, I mean, uh, I just want to thank Lorinda and the group of presenters with her for just a fantastic presentation, uh, not only in terms of the subject matter, but sort of thought-provoking about, uh, how it impacts our budget, and maybe some possibilities that we could do to, uh, address both the environment and the budget. Real briefly, a huge plug for Change is Simple, they are a group of rock stars, they're doing great work. I have professional, on my professional life, uh, we've worked with them at the Y, too, they're just, they're just phenomenal group, and a great, uh, partner for local government and school, school districts, so great job.
Well, good, I think, very good. And once again, thanks, Lorinda. And Sunday at the parade, she said she had nothing to present yet. Great job, Lorinda. That said, thanks to everybody for being here, uh, all of our presenters were great, I hope that we landed off a lot tonight, and know that, uh, we're all on the same team. That said, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. All in favor, aye. Opposed, that one's always, uh, fifteen or nine to zero. Night, guys, thank you very much.